I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Bolling Green Board of Commissioners for June 3, 2014. Invite you to stand if you wish while Commissioner Waltrip leads us into invocation and followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Bow with me, please. Father, thank you for allowing us to gather and conduct the business of this city. May we each be humbled by your grace and your mercy. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Waltrip?
Here.
Commissioner Williams?
Here.
Commissioner Denny?
Here.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Here.
Do we have any awards or recognitions tonight?
I have none, Mayor.
Any awards or comments from the commission? All right. Do you have any comments, Mr. Fable?
Yes, I do. There'll be a need for an executive session, a number of topics. Kate will read the reasons.
Pursuant to KRS 61-810C for discussions of proposed repending litigation against on behalf of the city, KRS 61-810F, discussions which might lead to the discipline or dismissal of an individual employee without restricting that employee's right to a public hearing if requested. This exception shall not be interpreted to permit discussions of general personnel matters in secret. And KRS 61-810G, discussions between the city and a representative of a business entity, discussions concerning a specific proposal of open discussions would jeopardize the siting, retention, expansion, or upgrading of the business. So move.
Motion by Hill, second by Waltrip. In discussion, please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Any other comments, sir?
No, Mayor, thank you.
All right. Approval of minutes from the regular meeting on May 20, 2014.
So move.
Motion by Hill, second by Waltrip. Any comments or discussion? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. I have an item on our agenda for public comments. If there's something that someone would like to bring to the City Commission's attention which is not on tonight's agenda, we invite them forward at this time. Seeing no one, we'll move to the first reading of, or excuse me, the second reading of Ordinance 2014-9.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning a tract of land containing 17.22 acres from AG Agriculture to HB Highway Business located at 5756 Russellville Road presently owned by Burke Family LLC.
So move.
Motion by Hill, second by Denny. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Second reading of Ordinance BG 2014, number 10.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning a tract of land containing plus or minus 0.23 acre from HB Highway Business to RM4 multifamily residential located at 1504 Parkside Drive presently owned by Gabriel Weaver, John Hammers, and Zachary Williams.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip, second by Hill. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Second reading of Ordinance BG 2014-11.
Ordinance amending code of ordinances. Ordinance amending Chapter 23 Water and Sewer of the City of Bowling Green Code of Ordnances as proposed by Bowling Green Municipal Utilities and to make other administrative changes.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Williams, second by Hill. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Second reading of Ordinance BG 2014-13.
Ordinance amending code of ordinances. Ordinance amending Chapters 5 Animals, 6 Building Regulations, 8 Cemeteries, 13 Health, 15 Business and General Regulations, 21 Streets and Sidewalks, 26 Public Trees, and 28 Flood Damage Prevention of the City of Bowling Green Code of Ordnances to move civil citation enforcement proceedings to Chapter 2 of the Code of Ordnances and to make other administrative amendments.
So move.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. And as I recall, this is with regard to the hearing structure with regard to the violations and that we'll, we have something on the table and when the city attorney gets back, we'll take it back off the table. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order approving the appointment of Sarah Greis to the Bowling Green Municipal Utilities Board.
So move.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. This one is, the next three, excuse me, four items are appointments which occur regularly during the City Commission. We want to thank those who have served in the past. Some of them are termed out and some of them are ending their post and we thank them for their service and now we look forward to having some new individuals on these and these next three are, or excuse me, next four are like that. So I want to thank Ms. Greis for stepping up for the BGMU Board. Any comments or discussion? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2014-101.
Municipal order approving the appointments of Doug Martins and Dean Warren to the City County Plan and Commission of Warren County.
So move.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Again, we want to thank those who've served and those that are coming onboard. Are there any comments or discussion? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order approving the appointment of Christine Foster to the Board of Park Commissioners.
So move.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. We're going to stop a minute on this one because Ms. Foster is kind enough to grace us with her presence, so we'd ask you to stand so that people know who's going to be on their Board of Parks Advisors, Parks Advisory Board. Thank you very much for your willingness to serve. Any comments or discussion? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. And municipal order 2014-103.
Municipal order approving the appointment of Brian V. Allen to the Bowling Green Area Convention and Visitors Bureau.
So move.
Motion by Hill, second by Denny. This is the hotel motel representative. They forward our recommendations to us and they select on their list. Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2014-104.
Municipal order approving and accepting the emergency and sole source acquisition to purchase and plant Latitude 36 Hybrid Bermuda Grass from Grassmaster Sod Farms of Patoka, Indiana in the amount not to exceed $40,000.
So move.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Mr. Fable.
Thank you, Mayor. As all of us know, it's been a very difficult winter, especially for plants and grass, Bermuda grass. We suffered some damage at the Crosswinds Golf Course as well as Lover's Lane Soccer Complex. We're faced with either waiting and hoping the grass will come back and it hasn't, or taking care of the problem and re-sprigging the grass. We want to try and, based on Tony Whitmer's recommendation of what is known as Latitude 36 Bermuda Grass and to install that ASAP, thus the reason for the emergency. Tony is here if you want to learn about grass or emergencies.
Any comments or questions?
Yes, ma'am.
I would just like to ask, was the killing of this grass just because of the cold winter or was there something done this time that's not been done in the past?
No, I think it was just exceptionally bad winter.
It was. It was just an extraordinary winter. It wasn't anything that anyone did or didn't do. We did all the right measures to make this, you know, this grass to survive through a winter and just like we always do. It was just one of those winters. It's the first time in my career I've heard about winter kill at this magnitude from some of the old timers and I guess I'm getting to be an old timer myself, but so, you know, now this, I guess it's our turn to experience one. So it was nothing, you know, it was just an extraordinary winter. Polar vortex, I don't know if you remember that, but we think that's about the time that all occurred, the kill occurred.
Should this take care, I have received several complaints from members of the community about our shape of our golf courses. Will this take care of it, you think?
I know it will. Now, at the two nine hole courses, of course, we don't have irrigation, we don't have the luxury of being able to sprig, so we're, you know, we're trying to nurse those back slowly because they weren't damaged nearly as bad as Crosswinds. But yeah, it will take care of the damage.
Good, thank you.
Yes, there's a good side of this, too. I have a patch of a Bermuda in my front yard my wife hates and it got killed over this past winter, so now I have a green lawn.
I understand.
Completely green, so. But for us, it hasn't been good.
Any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2014-105.
Municipal order authorizing public safety software subscription services from N4 Public Sector Incorporated, formerly Enroute Emergency Systems in the amount of $67,879.05 for fiscal year 2015.
So move.
Motion by Hill, second by Waltrip. Mr. Fable.
Thank you, Mayor. This is our ongoing software support for our public safety emergency systems. This provides essentially the software upgrades and communication, things we need to be able to communicate during the times of emergency. Lynn Hartley is here. This represents a roughly a 3% increase which is reasonable given volatility of software. But again, Lynn is here if any questions, as is Doug.
Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2014-106.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2014-32 for infrastructure equipment for the Neighborhood and Community Services Building from J.B.K. Network Consulting of Bowling Green, Kentucky, New Tech Solutions of Fremont, California, and Insight Public Sector of Tempe, Arizona in the total amount of $45,398.04.
So move.
Motion by Hill, second by Waltrip. Mr. Fable.
For anyone who's gone by 707 East Main, the building's coming along very well. We urge you all to come in and Brent or Jeff Lashley will give you a tour. In order to complete the project, we need to install the proper technology, so we're here tonight to ask you to approve essentially four different parts of what we need for the infrastructure there. Essentially wiring and relays, Cisco patches. Lynn is here if you have any questions about the technical aspects of it.
Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2014-107.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2014-24 for an agreement with occupational health professionals to provide employee medical services, physicals, and medical testing.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip and second by Hill. Mr. Fable.
I think it'd be appropriate for Michael Grubbs to come forward and to make a small presentation on this process and to discuss with you our results. Michael?
Good evening. We contract with a local provider for all of our employee medical services such as physicals, pre-employment plus physicals that we conduct during the year, drug testing, hepatitis, hearing conservation, you know, any kind of medical services that we need for employees and new employees. A number of years ago, we had Graves-Gilbert. We went through a couple of doctors with Greenview Hospital and then for about the last 15 to 17 years, our vendor's been CorpCare. Due to some issues and problems that we had had this year, we decided to put it out for bid. We had a three-year agreement with them and this is the end of the three years, so it was an appropriate time to put it out for bid anyway. So we put the process out to bid and we received three bids. One company only bid on drug testing and they were not the low bidder, so they weren't considered any further. We went through a pretty elaborate evaluation system as provided in the information. This was an evaluated bid. Cost was half of it. The other half was quality of service, customer service, timeliness, and also ability to provide the services that we, that we wanted. Now, staff and I went through, did a very thorough evaluation, checked all the references provided by the two bidders, and our recommendation is to go with OHP. We do have some experience with OHP. They have been providing workplace testing for us when we have someone injured. In order to get them back to work and make sure that they can do the job, they have provided physical capacity testing for us on a number of different positions. They've also done after-hours drug testing for us. Like if we have an accident in the middle of the night, employees involved, we require them to have a drug test before they can go back to work. Charlie Fortney, who's here from OHP, actually comes in after hours to do that testing for us. They've also done hearing conservation testing for us. So we have experience with that firm, obviously not on the volume that we had with CorpCare, but we're very confident that they can do the job for us and he's here, obviously can answer any questions about their operation. They have two locations. One is now on Nashville Road across from the South Central Industrial Park. They have another location up next to Warren East and they plan to have a third location out at the intersection of Scottsdale Road and Plano Road. So they are situated around the city that will be of benefit to us with our, with our testing. So, any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
Comments or questions? Please call, I'm sorry.
Thank you. And Lori Gray and Dave Wisbro did a lot of background work on this, so they appreciate their providing assistance to me on this.
Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. First reading of ordinance BG 2014-14.
Ordinance adopting annual city budget. Ordinance adopting the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky, annual operating budget for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2014 and ending June 30, 2015 by estimating revenues and appropriating funds for the operation of city government.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip, second by Denny. Mr. Fable.
Thank you, Mayor. Last meeting, we had a discussion and sunshining by staff of our budget recommendation. Essentially, this 2015 budget has been presented to you with no tax increase request. It also seeks to live within our means and to accomplish a number of public goals that this commission has set, primarily to increase money for paving across the community, to increase money for sidewalks, to increase money for our roadway system. For example, we're going to start planning, a two-year planning process on creating a turning lane off of Smahaus Road onto Campbell Lane, a much-needed improvement. We'll be doing that with cash over a two-year period. We also have in this budget McCollin Avenue, I believe, to be done this year. This, again, seeks to achieve the goals established by a commissioner and do so in such a way as not to create any kind of pressure to raise taxes.
Heard that correctly. No new taxes, no new debt, right? Did you catch that, Katie?
No new taxes. I don't have any lips, so I'll just say it out loud. No new taxes.
Comments or questions? I know it's a lot of work. You've spent at least half the year getting the budget recommendation together and you've made a very great, good presentation and I was greatly impressed with the information that you provided and we've all had the opportunity to go through it and ask questions and I think we're looking forward to a good fiscal year. Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. First reading of ordinance BG 2014-15.
Ordinance relating to classification pay schedules. Ordinance amending the classification pay schedules G for general classified, S for protective sworn, D for department head management, and U for unclassified part-time employees and authorizing pay increases for fiscal year 2015.
So move.
Motion by Hill, second by Denny.
I would ask Mike Grubbs again come forward to give you, give you and the public a brief overview of particular ordinance. Michael?
One of the first pieces of the budget to be adopted or put in place is the ordinance relating to our classification of pay schedules since that takes two readings. That's why it's on the agenda tonight after your first reading of the budget. Obviously, we have pay schedules that cover all of our employees. They show a minimum pay rate, a maximum pay rate for each classification. As the City Clerk, Assistant City Manager read off, we have different schedules for general employees, public safety, department heads, and part-time, temporary seasonal. This ordinance is to adjust the starting and maximum rates of those pay grades by the 2% COLA that we're giving. It also goes into detail for you and anyone with the public interested in knowing how the raises will be administered, how we're giving raises, the additional 20 cents an hour we're giving to part-time employees that are in grades under $11 an hour to help us in the event that the minimum wage does go up in the future. Again, this ordinance controls how the class schedules and the pay schedules are adjusted and then also provides the details for you on any changes and all changes that we're making with regard to pay for our employees for this coming year. We have a handful of upgrades that we're doing that are listed. There are some titles we're doing away with or changing and those are listed as well. We also provide information on how the city manager and the city commission salaries will be handled since those are controlled by either state code or local code. Again, so there's no question about how the city is handling the pay for its employees. And I guess just to remind the public, the state code provides elected officials can receive a cost of living raise up to that issued by the Department of Local Government for last year, which was 1.5%. So even though general city employees such as myself will get 2%, the elected officials are only getting 1.5%.
Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, one, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Mike, during our last meeting, I asked, and I'm going to ask again, based on what you presented to us, are our employees or in line or close to what the corporate world is paying the same type of classification in the area?
Well, again, we have only adjusted our pay schedule based on cost of living with the additional half percent that we're giving this year. We have not done a full market study since 2003. We did a partial market study, I guess, in 2005. So we have not done a full study to be able to say with absolute certainty we pay what corporate America pays. We're doing, I think the city's doing the best it can with its resources and I suggested that perhaps at your fall retreat, we might want to discuss this further, whether it's something that the commission would want to go forward with us doing another classification pay study. My past experience has been that employees are never satisfied with the results of the study. Everybody thinks they should be paid more. We also have pressures that are put on the elected officials to make changes and we have changes in elected officials. Seems like this process takes a long time. The two times we've done it, we had a major change with the elected officials right after we did each study and the subsequent commission made changes that the previous commission had agreed to. The next commission made changes to it. So, very long-winded answer that we have not done a market study, so I can't tell you we're paying what corporate America does, but we are keeping up with the cost of living and trying to give more than that to fairly compensate our employees.
Well, I guess my concern is that we survey every so often, like other entities do, out in the corporate world, to have a benchmark as to where we're at. When I was in the corporate world, we surveyed on a regular basis and I realized that there is a different type of situation there as far as the workforce, but I think that it is, it is good business on our part that we survey to see what an office associate similar job out there is making in comparison to what we pay. I think it provides us an opportunity to not only keep good employees, but we know as employer that we are doing the best we can with the resources that we have.
I think we agree. We have also used Victoria Gordon at Western, who's involved with local government. She has done a couple of small sample surveys for us in recent years just to help us determine, you know, are we, are we keeping competitive with those that we feel we compete with? And so far, we haven't had anything that shows us to be seriously out of line, but again, those were relatively small surveys. We have around 140 job titles and when you're doing a survey, you can't survey all of those and we have some very specialized titles. Very few other communities or employers are going to have an international communities liaison as an example for us to compare to, so, you know, you have to pick some benchmarks and work from there. But I don't disagree with anything you said. I don't think anybody does, that we need to maintain a relationship with the market.
I would, Mayor, if I could, I echo what Joe said and I would be in favor of looking at that at a fall retreat and go ahead and put that on the agenda.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you, sir. Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2014-108.
Municipal order approving the Title VI Civil Rights Plan for the City of Bowling Green Transit Program and authorizing its submission to the Federal Transportation Administration.
So move.
Motion by Hill, second by Waltrip. Mr. Fable.
Since the City of Bowling Green receives transit monies from the Federal Transportation Administration, we are required to abide by Title VI Civil Rights Plan and submit that to the appropriate federal agencies. You can find in your packet that those things that we agree to, commit to, as well as our subcontractors. If you would like, Brent Childers is here. He could take you around the field quickly about what this involved. You would like that?
Might I have any comments or questions for Mr. Childers? Thank you. I think the information you provided gives us a good background on it. Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2014-109.
Municipal order authorizing the submission of a grant application to the U.S. Department of Justice, Bureau of Justice Assistance, Office of Justice Programs for fiscal year 2014, Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Funds in the amount of $26,131.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip, second by Hill. Mr. Fable.
This seems to be a yearly activity of ours to apply to the JAG program, which stands for Justice Assistance Grant, to help us purchase in-car cameras. We're again seeking $26,000 to do that from the feds. There is no match. Brent is here if you have any questions or Doug.
Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2014-110.
Municipal order authorizing the submission of an application for federal Victims of Crime Act grant funds through the Commonwealth of Kentucky Justice Cabinet for the partial funding of a victim advocate position for the police department in the amount of $40,685.
So move.
Motion by Denny, second by Hill. Mr. Fable.
Yes. Those who are, suffer crime need to receive services from not only the police department but society. We're proud that our, our police department in our city provides services to victims of crime. We use a lot of our own money, but other people's money through this VOCA grant. April Fulcher is the person responsible for this and this is how many years?
22nd year of grant.
22nd year of us doing this program, which is probably on, on the frontier of great things our city does. So April's here if you want to hear from her or give her a chance to grow out.
She's been around a while. I think we know what she does by now.
22 years, yeah.
Thank you for your work, April. I know it's important and sometimes it goes unnoticed, but at least once a year, we remember who you are. Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2014-111.
Municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute a lease agreement with Downtown Redevelopment Authority Incorporated to lease Circus Square Park for concerts in the park and other downtown redevelopment authority incorporated events.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip, second by Hill. Mr. Fable.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. One of the great things we do in this community is the summertime concerts in the park and we work with our partner, DRA, to provide approximately nine different concerts during the month of July and August and as you can imagine, it's well-attended. This requires a lease. Gene is on a well-deserved vacation and isn't here to answer any question, but it's my understanding this generally represents the same agreement from last year. Chief Hawkins, our ABC officer, is here if there's any questions about how alcohol will be handled in the park during his events.
Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2014-112.
Municipal order approving lease agreement with the Brewing Company LLC for lease of a portion of the public sidewalk located in front of 423 Park Row.
So move.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Mr. Fable.
Item 19 and 20 are in the same family. They're, they're... They're essentially coming to the city and asking us to lease them a part of the parking lot so that during nice days, they could extend entertainment and food service from the inside to the outside. This is controlled by the lease. We have done this in the past, and we're here again to ask you to do one for the Brewing Company as well as the question mark. Gene has written both agreements.
And this is just for a small portion of sidewalk, not the parking lot?
Correct.
The last time we did two parking spaces.
Any comments or questions? Please call or roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2014-113.
Municipal Order approving lease agreement with question mark LLC for lease of a portion of the public sidewalk located in front of 427 Park Row.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Is there any further discussion on this item? Please call or roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. First reading of ordinance 2014-16.
Ordinance annexing property by consent. Ordinance annexing 0.52 acre of property located at 2111 Morgantown Road with property presently owned by Stonehenge Corporation, and said territory being contiguous to existing city limits.
So move.
Motion by Hill, second by Denny, Mr. DeFabo.
Steve Hunter is here to entertain. Any questions about a commission as far as this recommendation? Any questions on this half-acre annexation on Morgantown Road?
Hearing none, please call or roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2014-114.
Municipal Order approving and authorizing the execution of water line easements with Warren County Water District related to the Transpark Connector relocations on property owned by the Intermodal Transportation Authority Incorporated, and further authorizing the mayor to grant such approvals in the future for streets, roads, sidewalks, and utility purposes.
So move. Second.
Motion by Waltrip, second by Hill, Mr. DeFabo.
I think we're all happy about the renewed vibrancy of the Transpark as new businesses are coming there. This tonight is an example of those, of that vibrancy, is we're providing an easement to Warren County Water to put in a water line and other pertainses for the new connector. This is pretty much just an easement agreement. Meredith Robinson's here, if you have any questions.
Mr. Denny?
Does that mean we have to have an order for each one of the areas as they come up?
What these particular easements relate to is the I-65 Connector Road that DOT has going in that will connect the Transpark to I-65, and so as a result of that, Warren County Water District will have to relocate several of their lines. The way this is worded, that Gene did it, to where going forward, we will have more. There's probably going to be some from Atmos Energy, from REC. It empowers the mayor to go ahead and sign those.
But I was talking, talking about the streets, the sidewalks and so on. Will you have to bring a municipal order back, request for each one of those?
Not each easement, no.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? Please call or roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2014-115.
Municipal Order accepting the Intermodal Transportation Authority Incorporated fiscal year 2015 operating budget and fiscal year, excuse me, and financial statements ending June 30th, 2013.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, and second by Waltrip, Mr. DeFabo.
In our partnership with Warren County and the ITA Board, we, the city, require the ITA to report to this city commission and to the county its annual operating budget. With us today is Meredith Robinson, presenting the essential facts of the budget and financial statement. Meredith?
Sure. First, what I'd like to show you, this is an updated Transpark map, so you will see the latest project quiver that was announced. They'll be located on Lot 6, which was our CSX Select site. Additionally, you see Bilstein there. Just a couple of things I wanted to point out. Currently, we do have a speculative building going up right here. It's 108,000 square foot, just like Alflow was. The steel will actually be on-site the end of this week, so it'll start going vertical. It's already graded. And then we also just sent out a bid on this past Saturday. It was advertised in the newspaper. It'll be advertised again this coming Saturday to go ahead and widen Technology Way and extend it to the EDA property line and grade 108,000 square foot pad here and a 60,350 square foot pad here. So as soon as we finish this spec building, we'll probably start going vertical with another.
Where was the spec building? I don't think you're lying.
It's down here on, it's right here, sir, right across the street from Magna.
Okay.
Will agree metal for me. So those are sort of the latest happenings of what's going on construction-wise. With roads, I am waiting on a contract from the state. If you'll remember, part of the Bilstein agreement was to go ahead and extend Commonwealth Boulevard down to Ms. Paul Road. So as soon as I get that contract and we sign off on it with the state, we'll go ahead and let that contract, that RFP out as well, to go ahead and get that under construction. So lots of good stuff going on out there. Real quick, these are our annual wage assessment income over the last several years. You can see, we did have a slight dip due to the reception, but we are back strong as ever. Just a few items to point out related to the revenue side of the house. On wage assessment income, you will see, we budgeted for $836,000 worth of income for this year. We'll actually end up about $884,000. So we've budgeted a 3% increase for next year, and we always try to be conservative. Hopefully, we'll be far past that. You'll note the increase in the property tax income is related to AHK, Cannon, and Shiloh coming online for the property tax collections. We did budget a decrease in the farm leases. Obviously, we're going to have to cancel the farm leases related to the Bilstein project and to Quiver project, but that's a good problem to have. Couple other things, the tobacco-based income is going away 2014, the year we're in now is the last year that that was available. We never budget for land sales. We always try to anticipate them, but for this year, the actual is related to the land sale from the ITA to the EDA to build the spec building for that 24 acres. Only other thing, this is the lease revenue payments on the bonds. We did have a decrease related to the early payoff of bonds that we had from the DOT sale last year. So last year, that's why you see this huge bump, because it had the normal payments plus the DOT proceeds, but if you compare actual 2012 to 2014, 2015, you'll see the savings that we're realizing on the interest since those bonds have been paid off. And then we have received a grant for a half million dollars related to infrastructure in the park. That's that road extension and the two pads that will be starting soon. It's not going to get off the ground in this year, because we got delayed on an environmental review, but that's why it's moving forward to next year. And then this will be our payment from the bonds, for the taxable bonds. Real quick, these are operating expenditures. The green line was the forecast when the park was originally put together. The blue line is actual, so we've done a much better job than what was forecasted. Just a couple items to point out here on the management fees. This is our normal 3% increase per the agreement that we have with the city and the county. You will see a bump on professional fees for the current fiscal year, and that is related to all the legal and engineering work we did as a result of Bilstein and Merdern that's sort of ongoing. Obviously, the sinkhole in the middle of negotiations didn't help our case, so we had to do a little remediation effort and back up on an engineering basis there, but everything's good, and we're moving forward. No other major fluctuations on expenditures to note there. For capital improvements, we did have a roll forward from prior years on bonds. This was the proceeds that came back to the ITA from the DOT sale and the grant that I mentioned. So we had $1.23 million worth of promised expenditures related to this year that was delayed for the environmental, so we'll have a carry forward of $286,000. For 2014, we anticipate there to be $476,000 in excess of operating expenses that can go back into capital projects. We're anticipating another $400,000 plus from the current, from the new fiscal year, and then this will be the bond payment for 2015. So I have another 1.5, and we're budgeting another $1.1 million in capital expenditures. And we have applied for another grant, so hopefully that will come through, and we'll be able to do even more capital projects, which, as I said last year, we'll try to do as much as possible with other people's money. Just a few things. Last calendar year, we did have free announcements in the Transpark. Alflow is the classics company that bought the spec building up on Technology Way. Bilstein, the big project that'll be going in over by the water tower, and then Horizon Steel, which is partnered with Bilstein. They'll be a supplier. And then so far for this year, we have the Big Quiver Ventures at $155,000. And we've got really good activity on the spec building already, so with any luck, I'll go with, we can sell that before we finish it. But I know that's a really quick overview. The mayor told me brief is best. I'm happy to take any questions that you have.
Any comments or questions? Yes, sir.
Meredith, how many acres do we have left that is for possible?
There's about 400 total acres that the ITA owns that has not been sold, and that's including where the spec building is now, since obviously that facility hasn't been sold.
And we've sold, or how many acres?
I believe the park started with 950 total, so that would be 550 acres that has been used up in one form or fashion, either through infrastructure or for actual projects. We're going to be running out of land soon. We'll start looking for the next one.
That's good.
It's a good problem to have.
We appreciate that. Can we run out of them soon?
We're working on it. We're working on it.
That's all I've got, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
This is a comment. Melinda and I are both members of the ITA Board, and we have reviewed some of these numbers and this performance. Jeff and I also sit on the Finance Committee of the ITA Board, and so we're here to verify that what Meredith is telling you is accurate from the board perspective.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Appreciate the work that you've done.